All right, good evening and welcome to the August 25th, 2022 regular meeting of this Xenia City Council. We will have an invocation provided by a representative from the Miami Valley Women's Center, Ms. Ellen Brockwett, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Vice President Will Urschel. If you could please rise.
Father, I thank you so much for this meeting tonight. I thank you for all of the council members that have gathered for the good of Xenia. I thank you that all that is good and beautiful truly comes from you. I ask, Father, in the decisions that they make tonight and in the future, that you will give them wisdom for this beautiful city, for the flourishing of the people in it. Lord, may you guide them and help them in the many decisions that they make. I ask all these things in your loving and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we be seated? Thank you, Ms. Brockwett. Thank you, Vice President Urschel. This time I'll call our meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Brannum?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
On the agenda is the approval of minutes from the August 11th, 2022 regular meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by the Vice President. Any corrections, additions, notations to be made to the minutes at this time? All right, seeing no more, I get a roll call to accept, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Stay.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no special presentation scheduled for tonight's meeting, so we'll move right into audience comments. This is the opportunity for anyone that's live in the audience that would like to address City Council, may come to the podium at this time. If you could, give us your name and address for the record and limit your comments three or four minutes, please.
My name is Curtis Simons. I am now living in Virginia, Fairfax, Virginia, grew up in this area for over 20 some-plus years. Used to be cable guy here, graduated from Xenia High School. I run now a streaming service called HBC Go Network out of Washington, DC. My concern is, I wanted to talk to the council. I've been talking with Brett over the last, and you've heard some comments, I'm just here, the guy who tried to get this thing started regarding Lexington Park, the Lexington Park Group, and bringing back the life in Lexington Park. Over the last several months, a lot of the people, Clayton Braden's been here, one of my other colleagues, Clifton Ingles is here tonight, and others have been here. I wanted to address personally, since I had a chance to be in town this week, the council and my concerns. The concern is this, is that Lexington Park is an historical area. There's been many great athletes, people, citizens that have come out of Lexington Park. I've heard of comments over the few months since that the council was thinking about it, they had their druthers to take Lexington Park, move it out of the East End. I don't think the council understands the history of Lexington Park. When you look at Xenia High Athletics, Lexington Park was the driver of many championships that came to Xenia High School. There's a lot of athletes, black, white, Hispanic, Asian, whatever. The park now is, in my opinion, totally gone backwards. You know, we have a flower plant over here, one area, it used to be a softball field. We took away the fence around the gate, around the court. We've let the court go downhill where it's basically, Ryan and I were together this morning over the court where you passed it, and it looks pretty decent now, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done. I'm here with my group to say, we are willing to help the City Council, but the City Council has to step up a little bit. You know, the last comment that I heard is that, you know, we tried, what we wanted to do, I did a, had a friend of mine who owned a company called Sports Court, and I talked to Brett about it, we wanted to put a whole new court. We had a design, we had a layout, it was about $90,000 to do it. We're willing to raise some money on our crew to make that happen. Okay, we know it's not overnight, we know it's gonna take a little time, you know, but the comment I heard is that the council could only raise $15,000 to help us out. I just don't understand that, you know, and looking at, why, why is the park in the condition it's in, okay? There's nothing there. When we all grew up in there in the 60s, you had softball, you had fallen, you had baseball in there, you had other sports along with basketball, and it was a spot where we all thrived at to be there. To take Lexington Park as a historical area, I went around to a lot of parks the last couple of days, I've been here now for two days since I got in, okay? They have not built the same way Lexington Park was built, okay? Nothing to take away any other park in this area. You know, Xenia is an area I grew up and very proud of, but the fact that, what I'm here today is to ask, plead to the City Council, we need help, okay? And I'm willing to put some money in it personally to do that, but I need a little bit more help, okay? So where we're at now is, Dad, talking to Ryan this morning, we black talked the area, okay? So we've got some areas that we have to work on. Number one, the basketball court, that's the first area. The baskets and hoops that are there now were there when I grew up. They have not changed. They need to be, we need new hoops, we need new baskets. That's like $12,000 on the bid that we had to put four hoops, baskets in there with new basketballs. I'm willing to go half if the council's willing to go half of me. At least let's start with the basketball hoops. The other thing is, we need to line the court right now, okay? And what I had asked Brett early on is, there's been two legendary names in this area who have now both passed away, that we'd like to have their names on both courts. The first one is Ben Waterman, and if you do your homework, he was one of the most legendary coaches in this area. The next one is Ted Day, one of the most historic basketball players that come out of Xenia High and was on the only undefeated team in South State University, only undefeated team. That's history that we would like to bring back, that I need your help to do this. And I'm here tonight to plead on it. You know, I'm not in this area as much as I used to be because of my, living in Virginia, but I'm here tonight to plead with you, you know, is that we need help, okay? And what I grew up in Xenia, the biggest thing is always, was always, the proudest thing I, is back, that the council always was willing to give back and to help out in the community. So I'm asking you tonight, let's work together here. I'm not asking you to do it all by yourself. I'm just asking for some help, and more help. And understand, what we like to do is, you know, like you have it set up now, I drove up here this morning, and Brett and I talked about it, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna harp on it, because you guys are concerned about, you know, the violence or the cars and everything. The reason why that's happening is, is that there's nothing there. There's nothing there. When we grew up, there was nothing like that, because there was all the different activities that you can do here. So we want to start bringing activities back. Tippi's a musician, been here for years in this area, one of the most legendary Ingles around this area, okay? We'd like to try to do some entertainment events around there. We'd like to try to bring basketball tournaments into the, back to Lexington Park. We'd like to do trains into Lexington Park. But we need, there's nothing like, if you don't improve facilities, you can't bring product to the facilities, bottom line. You know, is either how do you have a good gym, how you gonna have a, how you gonna basketball team? So all I'm asking here is the council to kind of look in the mirror here a little bit and say, you have a historical place, and it seems like everybody just blows by it. It's like, well, it's the East End. No, it's not. It's Xenia. It's Xenia. We're all in this together, no color. It's all in this together. And all I'm asking for is that the council looks around in the big picture here, and let's help some of the young kids who are trying to find some relief, who are trying. And I've had many folks since we made this name, the Lexington Park Group, who now live in the community, say, we will help you supervise the area. But before, the reason, one of the reasons why the park is going downhill is because this ain't one Xenia don't care, so why, why should we care? That's the mentality, but that's not the truth. That's not the truth. So I'm just here tonight to say, if you can help Brett out, you know, counsel, in trying to help improve back to what Lexington Park really was like. I liked, in fact, even, what I told Ryan, I told Brett this before, so he's heard my story about it, is that when you come down from the parking lot, there's a walkway. Why couldn't we create, why couldn't we create a Lexington Park Walk of Fame? Some of the people who have made Lexington Park what it is, a lot of them didn't play high school basketball, didn't even play high school basketball, but they were legends at that park. And here's an example, because I'm, I travel all over the place, and do yourself, do yourself, if you want to do something, look at one of the most esteemed basketball courts in America called Rutgers Park in Harlem, okay? Rutgers Park in Harlem was beat up just like East End was beat up, like Lexington Park is now. People realized what Rutgers had done for so many people and came back and gave it a resurface, gave it new life. The TVT, one of the biggest tournaments that was on national television, would, if you win it, you win a million dollars off the street, was one of the featured courts, Rutgers was one of the featured courts on there. We could bring things like that. I have a streaming network. I can film stuff out of this game, out of the park, and put it on my network, which is the national network. It's not just, it's on Roku, we're on Amazon Fire Stick, we're on Apple TV, we're in millions and millions of homes. So we can make this thing a bigger picture if the council will look at it and say, hey, listen, let's do it together. I'm not asking you to do it all by yourself. I'm willing to, I've been a hustler all my life, you know, I'm willing to get out there and do what I need to do to help support my community, but I need some help. And I'm here today pleading for some help, some real help, you know? Anybody who knows me, I helped run the cable system here when it was caught on cable vision, I built the cable system that you're watching this right here, I'm the guy behind this right here, okay? I worked with ESPN for eight years, I worked with Black Entertainment Television, I was a TV host for 14 years. I know what I'm doing, ladies and gentlemen, I just need a little help. That's all I'm asking. And if I can really get you to come to the table, I will show you the product, but I just need some help. And that's why I'm here today, to plead to the council, to plead to the mayor, you know, let's take this and realize what we have here, you know, and put this in right perspective. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Curtis. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time?
I'd like to speak about the, I don't remember what item of code it was, but it's about the small farm animals. I'd just like it to be con, I'd just like that ruling to be continuous with the actual Ohio State Code, which states that you can only buy a minute, a maximum of six birds because of the fact that that's the maximum that can be brought in stores. This is a continuity error because the maximum amount of birds that can be had in Xenia, Ohio is four. So you have to either break city or federal law. I hope that my, I hope that my comments have been on topic, I'd just like you to consider that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bless.
Do you need his name?
I didn't get your, what's your name, sir?
Direct Elliot Baxter Wilkinson.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, I didn't tell you that.
That's okay.
You're good, you're good. All right. So anyone else, feel free to come to the podium at this time. All right, seeing no one else come forward. Do we have any emails, Michelle?
No.
No, okay. All right, we'll move on from audience comments to our first item in old business. This is ordinance 2022-28. This is titled, "A Public Hearing." This is the renumbering and amending of Chapters 234, 238, and 240, amending Chapter 242 and enacting Chapter 243 of the Administrative Code as contained in Part 2 of City Government, Title 6, which is the administrative code for the city of Xenia. This was last introduced by Mayor Mays on our August 11th meeting.
Sir, I'll move for passage, please.
Thank you, move for passage by the mayor. While we have that motion, I do need to request a amendment to that motion. Do I need to do that after the second?
Yes, please, after the second.
Okay, so at this time, I'll request if anyone would care to be, move as a second to the mayor's motion.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by the Vice President. So at this time, before we open the public hearing, I would like to make a amendment to the motion. This is requested by our Communications Director, an amendment to the Emergency Communication Division of Chapter 243. This is to retitle the Assistant Administrator position from a Public Safety Administrator to Public Safety Technology Officer. So at this time, we'll read that motion in, and do we need to get a, I'll make that motion, do we need a second to that?
Please kind of vote then, before you open the public.
So we need a second to my motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Scrivens. So at this time, we are gonna open our public hearing.
Yeah, could we have the vote on that motion, please, before you do the public?
Vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry, thanks for correcting me.
It's okay, it's new charter process.
We got a lot of stuff tonight, so just kind of plug it through here. So at this time, we're gonna have a vote, we have a motion, a second to the amendment. We are actually voting on the amendment that I just brought to the table. Could I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Urschel?
I'm sorry, question?
Yes, sir.
I have a question first, Mr. President.
Sure, we'll wait.
So I just want to make sure, I want to make sure I understand what we're voting on. So was it 243.02 where originally it was the Emergency Communications Administrator?
Correct.
Technical Administrator.
So we're changing that to Public Safety Technology.
Okay, I just want to make sure I knew what was happening.
That was just brought to us, right?
Got it. Mr. President, just to give some clarification, upon further discussion and trying to be consistent with the vernacular and some of the reorganization that we're doing, and then looking at the vernacular in that particular field, we felt that as amended, this language for this title would be more appropriate for the position than what we had originally recommended. So the powers and duties are staying the same, we're just changing the title? Yep, just the title. Got it, okay.
The positions already filled, it's not creating a new position.
Right, right.
The housekeeping.
Just, Mr. President, just some of the things that the Legislative Review and Government Affairs Committee did, we dot the i's and cross the t's.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, at this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please, on the amendment.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing, ordinance 2022-28, and open the floor. If anyone would care to come to the table or the podium, give us your name, address for the record, and speak for the renumbering and amending of these chapters. All right, if anyone would care to come to the podium and speak against the renumbering and amendment of any of these chapters. All right, seeing no one come forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this item and open the floor. If any of my colleagues on council has a comment or two or a question, all right. So at this time, we'll ask, we do have a motion by the mayor, we had a second by Vice President, so we will go ahead and get a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is also a public hearing, this is ordinance 2022-29. This is amending Sections 298.01 and 298.01G of the city's fee schedule and Sections 1220.01B, 1220.01C, 1224.01B and 10, 1224.01 Items E, 9, and B, 1224.01 Items E, 9, F, 1224.01 Item E and 19, 1226.02 Item C, 1236.06 Item K, 1239.09 Item E, and 1242.04 of the Land Development Code. This was introduced by Vice President Urschel at our last meeting.
I'd like to move for approval?
Thank you, move for passage by the Vice President. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. This time, I'll open the public hearing on this item and ask if anyone in the audience would care to come forward and speak in favor of amending these numerous items. If anyone would care to speak against the amending of any of these items, now's your opportunity. All right, and at this time, I will close the public hearing on this, ordinance 2022-29, and seek any comments or questions from council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on, and 1224.01B10, talking about accessory buildings and the setback, and it's not requiring fire retardant materials because you're 10 feet away from the building. Remember, that's how the Chicago fire got started. So for, I don't know, for them to just gloss over that, you know, it's a building, you know, it's gonna have things in there that probably are combustibles. Just my opinion, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would you care to, Mr. Fortner, do you want to address that?
Yeah, the reason that we're limiting that?
Can you, sir?
The reason that we're limiting that from the code is that we had checked with the Building Department, there is no requirement, typically the building codes and fire codes are the codes that are gonna regulate for fire safety, and neither of those codes has a requirement for any separation between an accessory building and the building that it serves. There is a requirement for a separation of certain types of materials between a building and a building on another property, but when you're dealing with a building that's on the same property, there's no, there is no fire or building code that requires that. And so we did check with the Building Department as well as our Fire Inspector before changing this requirement and basically determined that it was not, not necessary for, for fire safety. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, you got your answer to that. Any other comments or questions from council?
Mr. President, so I, just to a comment to our, our young man that came and talked, with the passage of this, assuming this passes tonight, we will raise our pulmonary limit from four to six, to be consistent with the ORC.
All right, thank you for notating that. All right, any other comments? So at this time, I'll seek a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next item, under Old Business, Item C is ordinance 2022-31. This is a title to a public hearing as well. This is establishing a six-month moratorium on establishment or commencement of inpatient or outpatient addiction treatment facilities within the city of Xenia. This was introduced by Vice President Urschel at our previous meeting.
I'd like to move for passage.
Thank you, move for passage by the Vice President. Do we have a second on this item?
So moved.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Dean. This time, I will open the floor and open the public hearing. If anyone would care to come to the podium and speak in favor of the six-month moratorium, now's your opportunity to do so, please. All right, if anyone cared to come to the podium and speak against establishing a six-month moratorium, now's your opportunity, please. All right, this time, I want to close the public hearing on ordinance 2022-31, ask for any comments from our council.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
When there's a moratorium, I always wonder what's, what's the theory behind the moratorium? Why do we need it? And why can't we just let interstate commerce do what it does? Just asking that question, anybody can, they wanna.
Do you want to answer that?
Do you hear his question?
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilman Scrivens, can you repeat that question for the Law Director? I'm gonna let her answer that.
The question is, what's the theory behind this moratorium? Why can't we just let interstate commerce do what it does?
I, I think the purpose, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager here in a moment, the current zoning code doesn't really define and address inpatient and outpatient treatment centers. So what the moratorium will allow us to do is, for the six-month period, to study where the best place to allow these in the city. What is the proper zoning for these? That they have minimum impact on neighboring residential areas, neighboring commercial areas. So it really just gives us an opportunity to be able to study, where do we want to put these in the city? Where's going to be the best location?
Yeah, I would just supplement and say that, in addition to the action item that went to planning and zoning last month, last month?
Right.
We've had additional inquiries from firms with similar types of services, including inquiries about potentially relocating in our downtown, where we've seen concerns emerge with existing services. So the intent here is to provide an opportunity for staff, including a planning and the Law Director, to evaluate standards, have discussion with committees of council and council itself to understand what your expectations are, where, what you want the policy of the community to be. It's obvious that we live in a society where these services are necessary. The question is, how do we create an environment where we can coexist with these services and not have adverse implications for, as the Law Director said, residential areas, churches, schools, that sort of thing? So it's, it's to take a period of time and take a look and make sure that we're doing right by the whole community. And obviously, this is a, a topic of great community interest, given the amount of feedback that we've gotten from, from residents.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, City Manager, thank you, Law Director, for that summation. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, so I, you know, we have a drug addiction and a drug recovery opport-
A drug addiction problem in the city?
And we have a drug recovery opportunity in the city. And it isn't limited to, so very little, we have no social services from a, from a municipal perspective, okay? So those are, those are principally offered either at the county or the multi-county level or from a state perspective. And I, I don't know that we've, we've sat down and got some counsel and understand the direction that those that are overseeing the social, you know, services from both a residential or non-residential treatment program, what, what their sense is of the need for additional places or how those ought to be positioned so that they're beneficial to us. And so we, we need not, not only just to talk amongst ourselves, but we need to find out, and as I, as I mentioned in our last council meeting, we already have an existing body that's been up and running for about three years with the Green County Drug Free Coalition that's sponsored by the county commissioners, and I think their next meeting's on September 8th, and I'm gonna be going to that, and part of that is to pose to them, you know, what, what is your, what is your vision for, you know, are we saturated in the county? Do we need to have additional resources? Do they, do they, should be, should they be placed in Xenia, right? Maybe we have no resources in Fairborn or Jamestown or some of the other places?
Township.
Right, or the townships. And, and we have some locations in the city that are working very well with the neighborhoods that they're in, and some that are frankly, real irritants to the neighbors that they're around, right? And, and a lot of this was not considered when, when our existing code was put together, you know, 20 years ago or so, right? So this is the reality we live in today, and we just need some time to step back and make some wise decisions so that, so that as we move forward, we know why we're doing it, right? And I understand the whole thing about freedom of that, but we, you know, we regulate all kinds of things, right? We regulate the speed through downtown, you know, we've decided that in Ohio, you can only go 25 miles an hour within, you know, block of the, of the area, and 35 in other places. We've decided you can only have somebody liquor license per thousand citizens, so
This is adopting a public records policy as required by ORC 149.43. This time I'll turn the floor over to our law director.
Good evening. The city currently has a public records policy, which is required under state law. However, that current policy is contained in section 289 oh six, the Records Commission chapter. That chapter will stand repealed in two days as we rewrote the Boards and Commissions title. So what we're suggesting is that council, there's no requirement it be codified. We are requesting that council adopt a new policy. We're requesting you do that by resolution. That will make it easier for us to amend that policy going forward as we need. Part of the reason we need this as well is the Public Records Act has been amended 28 times since the current public records policy was put on the books. So it's definitely in need of some updates. The suggested policy is attached to the resolution. It's, everything that's in there is in state law. What we try to do, if you actually print off 14948, it's 18 pages. And it's, it's kind of a mess to try and read. So part of the goal with this policy was to clarify, make it very clear to the public when they want to request records, what the requirements are if you want to inspect, what the requirements are if you want to copy them. There are certain limitations, those are included. For example, you can't make a public records request in lieu of a request for criminal discovery. We do see that every now and then. So what we are requesting is that council adopt this new policy. Our policy was in need of an update. Come two days from now, we won't have a policy. We did make this resolution effective on the 27th. So it would coincide with the repeal of the current resolution, but typically our resolution is going to affect immediately upon the passage. This would take effect in two days. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about this policy. We will be posting this. One of the requirements in the policy itself was that it be posted on the city's website, and it will be posted in the various city facilities.
All right, thank you. Questions for the law director regarding the public records policy? So, so this will take effective two days?
In two days.
Why is that? We're not voting that as an emergency?
You're, it's a resolution, so you vote on it tonight. We asked for an effective date two days from now because the current policy doesn't expire till two days from now. So that way we don't have, for the next two days, we don't have two public records policies. When the 289 oh six expires on the 27th, this will become effective, so we'll just go from, from the old to the new.
All right, very good. All right, if there's no other questions, who would like to make a motion to adopt this?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Thank you, our next item is resolution 2022 double V. This is awarding a bid and authorizing the execution of a contract for the city's 2023 through 2025 solid waste and commingled recyclable collection and disposal services with Runkie of Ohio. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to our city manager.
Thank you, sir. At year's end, the city will reach the conclusion of our current contractual arrangement with, with Runkie for collection of solid waste materials. Accordingly, staff has initiated a review of service needs, conducted discussions with our Public Service and Utilities Committee, and even had some discussion with council, seeking input on the services, and subsequently set forth the effort necessary to develop the new request for quotations for, for these trash collection services. Based on our request for quotations for trash collection services, we incorporated no major changes to the overall methodology. Felt that the, the cart system that we're using has been effective and so forth. One suggested change was to our approach to bulk service item collection, and the feedback from the council was that we moved to adopt a model that's more reflective of the actual cost, where we had been subsidizing that service through our rate model. So that is something that we will incorporate through this process. We did an advertised RFQ earlier this summer, and a review team was assembled from my office, which evaluated two submitted quotes, both were responsive, one from Waste Management, one from Runkie. These qualified bids were very similar in nature and overall in cost. As demonstrated in your agenda item materials, the quoted cost over a desired three-year term of service for weekly collection was slightly lower for, with the bid by Runkie at 5.826 million. Waste Management had more competitive rates for the optional three years of extended service beyond the base period, but also had higher price points for additional totes and various other categories for supplemental services. After evaluation and discussion among the review committee and discussion with the Public Service and Utility Committee, it is our recommendation that we move forward this evening, have council adopt the resolution to authorize executing the new contract so that as we move forward into 2023, we'll have a new three-year period extending that service with Runkie as, as quoted.
All right, thank you. Just curious, how many days of the week is Runkie through our?
I'm sorry?
How many days of the week is Runkie through Xenia?
Five days a week, unless they have to make adjustments for weekends if they have any delays.
It is all five days.
Yeah. And so the, the service option, you know, some communities want all, all collection on just a particular day, that tends to be a much more expensive approach. So ours is consecutive days through the week to spread out their services, much more cost-effective.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? All right, at this time, who would like to make a motion to ward the bid?
I'll move.
Okay, moved by the vice president. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns regarding, like everything, there's adjustments all the time with prices, so it does seem pretty compatible. Mayor Mays?
We had had some conversation about Xenia, about our guys taking over downtown trash. Is that?
That is, that'll be a provision of, of the new arrangement, we'll, we'll start collecting that downtown trash.
Fantastic, thank you.
I should add, you know, we, if I'm being very candid, we get complaints, maybe not weekly, but maybe close to weekly, something was missed or something that, that, you know, that, that was deemed by a particular resident to be a failure in the service delivery. But we have 10, 11,000 accounts, you know, locations that they're picking up trash across the city. So even if you had 100 complaints a week, that, that's, that's a pretty high success rate for a service that, and these times with labor is pretty difficult to, you know, to find folks and keep folks. So all things considered, Runkie's done a pretty good job. And, and again, given, given the quotes, we, we, we think that the support should be there to continue with them.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to compliment Councilman Urschel, he's the chair of the Public Service and Utilities Committee, and the assistant city manager, he crunched up a whole lot of numbers for us to get to this point to make a decision. And it was tough, but we decided to not go change the horse in the middle of the stream, so, thank you, sir.
All right. I share that same feeling. Any other comments or questions?
No, Mr. President. Yeah, I'd just say that, you know, as we look between Runkie and Waste Management, I think that there, there was a potential for Waste Management in the, in the out years, their, their options for renewal were lower. But I think what offset that was, they don't have a very big footprint in southwest Ohio. And, and, and there, there would be a short-term stress on the city to, to switch programs as well, too. So I think those, those were a couple items that, that played in our decision. And even though the, you know, the options played out differently at the end, we're getting a better deal at least in the, in the, in the first three years.
Yeah.
And I, and one of my personal concerns is, is where's Waste Management gonna be from a footprint in southwest Ohio, since they're, they're not that large? Are they gonna be a, a large enough player to even have interest in this? Because, you know, they're another state is their principal domain at this point, so. Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, this time, if there's any other questions, we'll get a roll call, please.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item under new business is item C, resolution 2022 double, double W, which is authorizing the execution of a contract with Strand Associates, Strand Associates Incorporated for Engineering Services for a completion of a stormwater utility rate study. This time I'll ask Mr. Merriman to explain this.
Thank you, sir. As a result of numerous conversations with our Public Service and Utilities Committee and really with the broader council, and ultimately in your direction, staff has been advancing work toward implementation of a more equitable and robust fee structure for our city's stormwater utility. The equivalent residential unit fee system is a widely used methodology that establishes a standard residential equivalent area and then calculates area equivalent rates for all individual commercial and industrial sites around the city, based on previous area covered at those respective sites, as well as residential. Under this new system, businesses will necessarily see some increase in stormwater fees paid, which will bring them more in line with rates that are currently paid by our residential property owners, who are candidly paying a much higher proportional amount of, of fees as a result of what is really a pretty inequitable system in place today. The process of comprehensively evaluating all properties citywide in order to determine the equivalent areas and rates for each property, what we would call a stormwater utility rate study, is a very significant undertaking, as you can imagine, thousands and thousands of parcel citywide. And so we feel that we, we do not have the capacity in-house with staff to do that. So we are recommending contracting with a qualified engineering firm to assist with this labor-intensive effort. To this end, the city solicited and on June 6th received three responses to an RFQ for firms to complete a stormwater utility rate study. After review of the qualified, qualification submittals, staff finding Strand Associates Incorporated to be the most qualified of the interested firms. City staff and Strand have agreed upon the scope of work and have prepared a contract instrument for the services that will be rendered. The agreed-upon fee of $92,100 is available in the budget, as this has been an anticipated body of work for 2022. So we're recommending tonight, council, approve this contract via the authorization of the resolution that'll allow us to commence the work immediately with the expectation that that would be completed sometime in the, in the first quarter of 2023.
All right, thank you. All right, we have some questions already for you.
Okay.
Thanks for that. So I'll ask my question first. So under compensation under this agreement, item two, can you explain that change order policy and what would put us in a situation where we would ask for a change order and then we would be assessed a fee of $12,000?
It's item.
Yeah, I'm sorry, item D, compensation, and then item two under that. So I just, I'm curious.
Those are if-authorized services, those are not part of the base contract, as the city manager said, it was 92,100, the city's initiation and approval.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll turn the floor for any more questions?
So, Mr. President, can I just make a comment? So this, this, this is critical that we get this study done, so we have a basis for adjusting the charges, because, so stormwater removal is, is, is not just a hazard thing, but if you can't get the water off the roads, the roads suffer. And right now, our stormwater removal system is under a lot of stress. And, and we've got a lot of, for better or worse, we've, we've had a lot of commercial properties that are, that are paying pennies on the dollar for a stormwater removal system. And, and there's nothing wrong with that, that's just how, how we set up our fee structure. But we've got to get a much more equitable fee structure set up here so that somebody has, you know, a fifth of an acre lot isn't paying the same as somebody has, you know, you know, a five-acre lot, you know? Just because that's the, that's, that's the fee structure to set up at some historical time in the city. And we, we need this so that, so as we go forward and we, we get the rates set so that we can actually take care of our roads. And that's, that's just a, it's a have-to by the city. And we don't want to do that on the backs of all of our residents at this point, when we're allowing, you know, for better or worse, a lot of the commercial properties are not, are not paying very much for that, but they have a lot of land basis and a lot of water needs to be removed from them at this point. So, so I'll tell you, we went through the public services and we've been working on this for a while, and it's, it's just one of those really critical steps to move forward. The other thing I'd mention is, this is a not-to-exceed price here. We're actually gonna be billed by the actual labor and fee structure. So, I mean, obviously, we've negotiated this with anticipation, this'll be around a number of hours, but, you know, that may, may come in less at that point, but this isn't just a, you've got $92,000. This is, this is a, a cap that as we execute the contract and they're billing us actual hours of labor, that'll go against that.
And those fees will be out of the what fund?
Yeah, our stormwater fund, so under the existing rate model. Which I might add is, it's not based on need, it's not based on any formula, it was, you know, let's just adopt these price points for these various functions, so there's no real methodology. I would just point out, too, in the last 30 days, the National Weather Service has identified five 1,000-year rain events at different locations in the U.S., including this week in, in Dallas, Fort Worth, where they were rescuing people from cars on, on roadways. Our stormwater system in this community is, is very integrated. We have a lot of needs and, and no funding system in place today to address those needs. So this, this utility exists as essentially flood prevention, and we utilize our roadway systems as part of a conveyance system to, to funnel those waters safely to low-lying areas as appropriate. And so we have the benefit of helping to improve our transportation system, at the same time, provide mechanisms for flood prevention. And that's what this utility is for. And ultimately, we are seeking a, a model, a rate model, that is equitable and sufficient to meet the needs of that system, which has really been neglected for many decades. So this is very, very important. It's one of those things that's easy to, to put off until you really need it. And when you really need it, it's too late.
All right, Mr. President. Yeah, yes, sir.
Mr. Engineer, does this plan consider conveyance problems like curbs that are broken out or, or catch basins that are not being cleaned and?
So the answer is yes and no. In other words, those items will be part of a capital improvement plan that will be developed, which will, so once we have the capital improvement plan, we'll know how much money we need or have an idea, which will then dictate what kind of a rate we're charging for, per ERU. So yes and no to answer your question.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
I just, just to add, Mr. President, in any stormwater system, if we're not conveying the water, if it's ponded, then we've already defeated our purpose. So if we don't have our curbs clean and not have a bunch of dams in there where people let grass grow and everything, I keep saying this day after day after day, one of these days they're gonna realize that we're gonna need to keep our curbs clean and our gutters clean. So when we do have a massive rain event, which we're gonna have one day soon, then we'll be prepared. Right now, I don't see us being thoroughly prepared. We're marginally prepared at this point. But we need to redouble our efforts, at least for the system that we have now, at least clean it out. I rest my case, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Any other comments or questions?
Another $92,000.
All right. So at this time, we need to seek a motion for the contract.
So moved.
Moved by the Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the vice president. Any additional discussion? And at this time, we'll go ahead and get a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean? Councilman Branham?
Nay.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is item D, this is resolution 2022 double X. This is authorizing an execution of an extraterritorial service agreement with the Ohio Department Natural Resources for the provision of a water and sewer service to the Great Council State Park. This time, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Merriman.
Thank you, sir. The Dewan administration announced in February this year plans to establish Ohio's 76th State Park, to be called the Great Council State Park, and which will be located just north of our city's corporate boundary on US 68 at Old Town, specifically at the former Tecumseh motel location. This is the recognized historic site of one of the largest-known Shawnee Indian settlements and is widely believed to be the birthplace of Tecumseh and historic leader of Native Americans and iconic folk hero. The new park would consist primarily of an interpreted center as well as relocation of- of several historic markers. The Ohio Department of Natural Resources will be the managing entity for the site. To reduce the development and long-term maintenance costs for the center, ODNR approached the city with a request to connect to our municipal water and sewer utilities. For water service, this was not a problem as an existing tap serviced the former motel as an extraterritorial customer. However, there is no municipal sewer nearby. As a result, staff negotiated with ODNR resulting in a proposed extraterritorial service agreement whereby the city would authorize water and sewer, sanitary sewer services to the site. In exchange, ODNR would be responsible for installing and maintaining at their expense a water connection as well as a two-inch force main sewer service lateral that will traverse approximately 1,475 feet along US 68. In addition, they would be required to pay a 50% surcharge for both utilities. The agreement also stipulates that the site would be annexed in the future, as would be practical under state law. The city of Xenia's policy, like most other cities, excludes connections to our utilities unless a property owner annexes into our municipal corporation. However, there are some unique circumstances with this particular situation, and the staff believes that the addition of the state park and interpretive center present an amenity for our community and can serve as a tourist attraction that brings positive benefit. As a result, we are recommending city council approve a resolution to authorize the extraterritorial service agreement, and that is presented here tonight in Resolution 2022 XX.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for city manager regarding this service agreement? And that's extraterritorial, not extraterrestrial.
Yeah.
I almost called this the UFO, but no, it's all good. I'm intrigued.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I was just past this particular property today. Now, see, we do have water plugs before and after the property, so it shouldn't be a problem for us to tie in.
Yeah, the water is not an issue. Again, there would need to be an agreement for that purpose, but in this particular case, it's the sanitary sewer. We have no line out there. We went through an extensive negotiation period with them. I'll be honest, I don't love this. An individual service lateral that length running adjacent to our primary water line is not an ideal situation, but we are trying to be a good partner with the state. This is a good thing for our community and for our region, so we're trying to work together.
Especially all that land after Timber Ridge, so... Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
So, Mr. President, I just say that, you know, if you understand the history of Ohio, that area is an extraordinarily significant area, not only for Native Americans but for the establishment of the state. And it was sad, driving by there in the past, that there were a number of historical markers...
On the side of the road.
On the side of the road with no real ability even to go see them. And it was just, it was a very pathetic setup to a very historical site. And this interpretive center is going to be amazing, and it's going to be a great addition to our community. And I understand what you're saying about us stepping out on this, but I just think that this, even though it's going to be painful, it's going to be very beneficial to us, not only from a municipal perspective, but just for us to honor the history of the state and something that's so, so close to us. And I'll tell you, as I've talked to people, people don't understand the history of this area, and it's been forgotten to a large extent. And this is going to be something that's going to allow our school kids to go and our families to go and really understand what was going on in the 1600s and the 1700s and 1800s here in Ohio, so...
All right, very good. Other comments, questions?
Council President, just wanted to make sure. So there's no, we're not doing any of the work here. It's literally contracted out by somebody else, and they're not tearing up besides the tap to the main. They're not tearing up any roadway running the sewer lateral.
So the cost from engineering to construction of the installation is completely borne by ODNR. It'll have to be subject to inspection to meet city standards, but no cost for us. I think the line does traverse under 68. Chris, is that right, the final design?
There are portions... They have not got their final permit. Remember, that's under jurisdiction of ODOT to get their permit to install there. There's a couple of hydrants, and like the city manager was talking about, trying to keep that force main away from the water main, where they may have to dart into the pavement of 68. Once again, that's under ODOT's jurisdiction.
Okay.
And if I understand this correct, the state's looking around about just a little bit north of that anyways.
Correct. Well, I think that's pretty much a done deal. It's at 235 and 68 intersection.
So there's going to be some major construction of that.
That project is in transit, isn't it?
Yes, right.
All right, thank you. All right. At this time, I'll seek a motion to authorize the agreement.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
Also no.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, we'll seek a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item under new business, item E, is Resolution 2022 XY. This is authorizing an execution of a contract with Central State University for fire and EMS services. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The city has been the contractual partner for provision of emergency medical and fire response services for Central State University since 2012. This arrangement has been mutually beneficial, and both parties believe continuation of the service provision is warranted. This evening, staff is presenting the resolution recommending re-upping of this service. However, we have given Central State notice that we do believe that it is time for an increase in the base fee. We've had the same amount since the inception of the contract due to inflation and just other cost increase over the years. We are recommending that the base rate go from 156,000 to 172,000. We would continue to be able to receive any EMS billing as a result of EMS services to the site. So we've had that conversation with Central State. They're aware that that's our condition. Other than that, the base contract requirements, the service delivery requirements are the same, and we are recommending that resolution this evening so that we can continue those services.
All right, thank you. Questions for the city manager? All right, this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the contract. Moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. There's no other questions. We'll seek a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda is the appointed officials' reports. This time, we'll start with our law director, please.
I just have one thing I'd like to share with council. Our prosecutor, David Morrison, who started with us in 2020, has resigned. David is going to be the new tax foreclosure attorney over at the Green County Prosecutor's Office. So we wish him well. We're thrilled we get to keep working with him. We have hired a gentleman by the name of Melvin Planus. Melvin started at the Warren County Prosecutor's Office. He did some private work for a while. Most recently, he was at the Clinton County Prosecutor's Office. We are thrilled to have him. It's been about a week and a half already getting absolutely stellar feedback on his performance. If you would like to meet him, feel free to stop over at the law department. Ask, probably try and limit your visits to Thursdays or Fridays because Mondays through Wednesdays are crazy. He pretty much spends his whole time in court. So we're thrilled to have Melvin on board and just wanted to share that with council. If you're in town on a Thursday or Friday, please stop in and meet him.
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything for our law director tonight?
So I just want to let people know the significance of this move and why that is so important for us as a city because we've had a lot of discussions about the fact that we have literally hundreds of properties that are underwater from a property tax perspective, and we, the city, are basically managing the maintenance of those properties without any reimbursement. And they're just blight on our community. And we have no powers within the city to address that. That's all by the Ohio Revised Code, has been granted to the county treasurer, the county auditor, the county prosecutor, the county court of appeals, and the county sheriff. So there's five elected officials that have the responsibility of addressing those issues within a municipality, but none of us in the municipality have any authority to do anything there. And Donan and I spent some time talking to those individuals, and good on David Hayes, our county prosecutor, said we need to be able to do that and to file with the county municipal or the county police court, they needed additional position to move forward on this. And so, you know, they told us earlier they're going to be moving out on that, and they have. And so I just want to commend them on doing that. And our county treasurer is ready to get moving with them as well, and our county auditor. I think all of our county officials are ready to help, start helping with that. So I'm anticipating, I don't know, Brent, what you're thinking, anticipating next year, as they get their legs underneath them, we should see significant movement on these properties. And once again, it's not for us to collect additional money because we get very little county taxes comes to us. I mean, this principally goes to the schools and to the county. But the benefit for us is to get these rolled over and turned into productive pieces of land and remove the blight from the neighborhood, which depresses the rest of the neighborhood and stuff as well, too. And 90% of these properties are in the city of Xenia and the city of Fairborn. And so this is going to, this really is a response to our two municipalities. It's going to be a major benefit to us, so...
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else have anything for the law director? All right, we'll move on to Mr. Duke.
I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duke. Anyone have any comments or concerns with our finances tonight? All right, you're in good hands. Thank you. The city manager, Mr. Mayor.
Just a couple items this evening. I felt it appropriate maybe just to address the situation that we've experienced at St. Brigid this week. Obviously, this is an ongoing case, so we don't want to speak to specific details, but I did want to lift up the administration and parents at St. Brigid for being aware of their surroundings and the people in their surroundings. Can't stress that enough today, particularly in these institutional locations with kids. And then just acknowledging Xenia Police Division and the excellent job that they have done. If you've seen the information we've released even today, this is an extraordinarily dangerous job and a tough time to do it. So our staff has acted professionally and effectively in dealing with this, and we'll let the justice system move forward with this, but I just wanted to acknowledge their services and thank them again for what they do. On a much more positive note, I wanted to thank our council members and staff who participated in our Neighborhood Night Out Tuesday night at Spring Hill Park. We had a really good turnout, beautiful weather, demonstration rappelling, Fire Division rappelling from the water tower. Thank all of our partners from Xenia Community Schools to Central State and a whole bunch of others who were there providing information and lots of giveaways to our residents. And thanks to One Bistro for helping coordinate meals again, free of charge with their assistance. Our next Neighborhood Night Out is at Shawnee Elementary on Tuesday, September 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So we encourage really anybody in the community, but certainly folks in that immediate vicinity to come out to Shawnee Elementary on the 13th of September. Council members, encourage you to be there as well to connect with our constituency. So that is all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Mayor? All right, thank you. Next is opportunity for council comments and reports. I'll start with Councilman Branham.
I've got nothing further to add.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Dean.
I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman Dean.
No, I'm off.
All right, Councilman Scrivens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. Glad to see Mr. Curtis Simons here, and I think he articulated very succinctly and concisely how we, and I say "we" because I'm part of that movement to revitalize Lexington Park. We see a future there that is really daunting, and the longer we kick the can down the road, the slower we'll be in obtaining what is there for us to get at the end of the rainbow. So just another nudge that I'm here to grease the skids, to add some fluid between the cogs of the wheels so this machinery can move on. Lexington Park is an essential park in our, I think, 13-park community, and it's just time that, you know, now we move assets to Lexington Park. It's just that simple. So I can see a walkway around the park and lights and benches periodically where you can sit and relax, and the people on scooters can ride around the park. Right now, they're limited. They can ride in and ride out. They can't use the park. So that being said, I'd like to express some condolences to the family of Ronald Nart. He passed away back on August 6th. Ronald served in the U.S. Army as a bomb specialist, but you'd never know that because he was just a regular guy. Worked taking trash at Xenia football field, taking the trash, cleaning trash. Did what he had to do. Worked for the school board. Nice fellow. All the kids called him Mr. Ron. So just want to say farewell to him. I knew his whole family. His brother, Richard, and I, we were track stars together. Richard started the four-by-one, and I ran the anchor. And just wanted to say to the whole Nart family, God bless you. Condolences also to my classmates' mom. She just passed away. Her name is Miss Charlotte Whitaker. My classmate, Doug Whitaker, and his brother, Tom Whitaker, we know each of them very well, and want to express to them our deepest sympathy on the homegoing of their mother. Understand, she's going to be funerated at the Emmanuel Baptist Church tomorrow. So... And then also, Mr. President, just want to thank the city, all the staff, all the residents for the Neighborhood Night Out last night, Tuesday night. That was really, really nice. We should continue that. It's a good practice. It gets the city people out into the community, lets the community put hands on their representatives, and allows the community to see what actually their tax dollars are doing. And it's just a good thing to get people together at our neighborhood and community parks. So that's just a good thing. And then finally, Mr. President, the Xenia Buccaneers have started off their winning ways in football. They play tomorrow on the road against Detroit Trojans, so we want to say, "Go Bucks." Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Mayor Mays.
Thank you. A couple of events to report. The 14th, just paid in the citywide worship service, the community service. I know many were there as well, Wes Smith and Councilman Urschel. It was just an amazing event with 15-plus churches of the community coming together to have a worship service on a Sunday morning. Churches from every part of town, many different denominations, and it was just a very exciting event, and I'm thankful for the pastors, the churches that put that on, and working also with the community of Xenia, with the city, and making sure that that happened. It's good to love, honor, and city that way. On the 17th, on Wednesday, the 17th, went to the Jam Fest. The Green County Council on Aging has a yearly event with a fundraiser. It's a lot of fun because the other mayors and other people from the different communities come to Xenia because it's for the county. I will say, there was the annual cloud-blowing contest. I went further than I've ever gone, but Mayor from Fairborn still beat me in the final round. So I'm sorry, Xenia, I've let you down, but I tried. On the 19th, went to the football game where the battle of the backyards. We had the trophy that goes back and forth, and it was really great at the end of the game. The mayor of Beaver Creek, we have a very good relationship. We like to have a lot of fun, and it was really enjoyable as we won 40 to 3 to be able to give him a hard time. And he asked me if he should present the trophy to me, and I looked at him, I said, "Have you ever heard the wolf cry to a blue corn moon?" "No, I'm just going to hold on to that trophy because I don't want anybody to think that you gave it to me." So, because we already had it. So what a great night.
We don't need to have a back and forth.
Exactly, no, we just keep it. On the 21st, participated at the Shop for Dignity craft show. What a great event. It was so good to see so many vendors from here in Xenia, talk to them and support them and just thank them for the work that they're doing, all through the agency of Providing for Women. And then, as everybody's mentioned, on the 23rd, the Neighborhood Night Out took, that took place, and it's just one of the things that I enjoy about that in our community. Last week, there was just, this is just an example, a new family at our church that just relocated here. They're military, and it was really great to be able to say, "Come out to the park that's right around you, meet people from the city, and enjoy dinner on us." And we just, what a great night it was, and they were able to come, and a lot of people and want to express to them our deepest sympathy on the homegoing of their mother. Understand, she's going to be funerated at the Emmanuel Baptist Church tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So. And then also, Mr. President, just want to thank the city, all the staff, all the residents for the Neighborhood Night Out last night, Tuesday night. That was, that was really, really nice. We should continue that. It's a good practice. It gets the city people out into the community, lets the community put hands on their representatives, and allows the community to see what actually their tax dollars are doing. And it's just a good thing to get people together at our neighborhood and community parks. So, that's just a good thing. And then finally, Mr. President, the Xenia Buccaneers have started off their winning ways in football. They play tomorrow on the road against Detroit Trojans, so we want to say, "Go Bucks." Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Mayor Mays?
Thank you. A couple of events to report. The 14th, participated in the citywide worship service, the community service. I know many were there as well, Wes Smith and Councilwoman Urschel. It was just an amazing event with 15-plus churches of the community coming together to have a worship service on a Sunday morning, churches from every part of town, many different denominations, and it was just a very exciting event, and I'm thankful for the pastors, the churches that put that on, and working also with the community of Xenia, with the city, and making sure that that happened. It's good to, to love our city that way. On the 17th, on Wednesday, the 17th, went to the Jam Fest. The Green County Council on Aging has a yearly event with a fundraiser. It's a lot of fun because the other mayors and other people from the different communities come to Xenia because it's for the county. I will say, there was the annual cloud blowing contest. I went further than I've ever gone, but Mayor from Fairborn still beat me in the final round, so I'm sorry, Xenia, I've let you down, but I tried. On the 19th, went to the football game where the battle of the backyards. We had the, the trophy that goes back and forth, and it was really great at the end of the game. The mayor of Beaver Creek, we have a very good relationship. We like to have a lot of fun, and it was really enjoyable as we won 40 to 3 to be able to give him a hard time, and he asked me if I, if he should present the trophy to me, and I, you know, I looked at him, I said, "Have you ever heard the wolf cry to a blue corn moon?" No, I'm just going to hold on to that trophy because I don't want anybody to think that you gave it to me. So, because we already had it. So, what a great night, and then...
We don't need to have a back and forth.
Exactly, no, we just keep it. On the 21st, participated at the Shop for Dignity craft show. What a great event. It was so good to see so many vendors from here in Xenia, talk to them and support them and just thank them for the work that they're doing, all through the agency of providing for women. And then, as everybody's mentioned, on the 23rd, the Neighborhood Night Out took, that took place, and it's just, one of the things that I enjoy about that in our community, last week, there was just, this is just an example, a new family at our church that just relocated here. They're military, and it was really great to be able to say, "Come out to the park that's right around you, meet people from the city, and enjoy dinner on us," and we just, what a great night it was, and they were able to come, and a lot of people there that you don't get to see all the time, but to socialize with, and so proud, it's just, it's a moment I'm proud of our community and proud of our staff, so thank you for the work that you put into that, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Mays. Vice President Urschel?
Sure, I just, I just like to second the, there are very few communities where you'll have churches across so many denominations come and shut down the worship services and say, "We're going to come and worship together." And I just want to publicly commend Pastor Chaz from Home Church.
Absolutely.
Like I told a lot of the other pastors, he's, he's, he's a young guy, and, but he was too young to know that we couldn't pull this off. The rest of us old guys would have said, "That's never going to happen. It's not going to happen." But Chaz, Chaz went out and got us all together, and we had lunch today with the pastors to just reflect on that and talk about what we need to be working on, but I'll just tell you, there was just a great sense of, with the other pastors, that this is, this is good, but we need to continue this. And so, I think lots more to come from the faith community here in our city, but just, that was just an exciting time. Not much we can say about this, but I would say that we, in our Public Safety Committee, we did a review with our Xenia Police Force, Department of Fire, and Dispatch in terms of how we would address a, an issue at our schools, in terms of active shooter and those types of things. And I just want to let the community know that, that our, our first responders are well-trained and that they are lean forward, and there's no secret about how the, how the state of Ohio has a posture that first-on-scene will go in, and we've seen a number of communities that that has not been true. And I think coming, coming out of that time, the discussions with that, and, you know, talk about the risk that our folks are ready to do, but that's what they've signed up to, and they are, they're ready to go, and they're trained to do that, our new folks, our old folks, and whether that's going to be Xenia Police, whether that's going to be the Sheriff Department, whether that's going to be, you know, state troopers, it's, it's going to happen. So, I just would say that coming out of that, I think, I'll ask Councilman Scrivens who chairs that, but I think we, we were, we felt very good about the posture that our city has from a response perspective. And we also had our, our Police Division did a review with the, with the school district in terms of the, the new setup for the new middle school and the safety aspects of that, and so we got some ongoing discussions going on there, too, but I'm just glad that we had an opportunity to participate with them and give them, give them some good feedback on that.
Yep.
And I would just echo what Councilman Scrivens had to say. Curtis, I'm, I'm 100% with everything he had to say tonight. And the, my sense of being in, in our community and talking to folks is that Lexington Park is a heart of, 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 of our community, and the folks, we, as we look to revitalize